All right, it is 6:30. We will get the meeting called to order, please, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody, tonight to our meeting. Roll call, Mr. Lombard.
Ullam.
Yes.
Odie.
Yes.
Saxor is absent. Telkot?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
All right, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agendas presented tonight, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. No conflict of interest disclosure or waiver requests tonight. Takes us to community input, which there was, there was not any submitted for tonight. So that takes us to general business items under oral reports. Good news report from Brandon Valley Middle School.
Thank you. Thank you. We have two different topics tonight. Our first one, at the middle school, we just concluded what we call our Inclusion Week. So it's kind of a little bit of a takeoff what Mr. Slickaway in the high school did. But we have a variety of people here that will speak tonight. Our staff members that were in charge are Roxy Gertis, Ms. Delaney, and Ms. Stamback. They are kind of the ones that headed up. And then we have a student here, Marcus Turner, who will kind of give you a brief overview of Inclusion Week also. So ladies, do you want to come up?
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us. We're so excited to be sharing some good news from the middle school. My name is Amy Delaney. I'm a speech therapist at the middle school, high school, and Valley Springs Elementary. It was a privilege to put this Inclusion Week together. And we want to thank Wendy Othine, our Special Services Director, for supporting this idea, as well as Mr. Thorson and Dr. Nelson for helping us implement those activities throughout the week. This was held April 4th through the 8th, and we have lots of neat slideshows to kind of give you a visual of what we did. We started off with "Your uniqueness is your magic" was the theme for the week. And we'll kind of give you a little bit of a brief summary of what we did throughout the week.
Hi, my name is Anna Stamba, and I am a special educator at the Brandon Valley Middle School. So Monday, we had Light It Up Blue Day. April 2nd is National Autism Awareness Day. And so each day was themed, the kids wore blue on Monday in honor of that. And then we introduced our new program at the middle school called Link's Leaders Cards, where students are caught being kind, and educators in the middle school will write kind things about the students they see doing kind things, and then they will actually get the card. And the students will be announced later in the week on Friday and be put in an entry for like a drawing to win something. This week, since it was our spearheading this campaign week, the winners of a Link's Leader Card, those who are caught being kind, got their golden ticket to eat first in the lunch line on Friday, and it was a huge incentive.
Yes, I'm sure.
So on your card, on the left side, the teacher will write something nice. On the right-hand side, they will list their information, and the students actually get the nice thing that the teacher wrote about them. On Tuesday, we had You May Not See What's Affecting Me Day. And this day highlighted all of those exceptionalities that we don't necessarily see that students are struggling with, but they do. So this was a great day in our homeroom slides to go through some of these exceptionalities that students deal with. And we had great talking points to help their peers kind of understand what they go through. And just some more information about it. It was a great day for all of those exceptionalities that we just don't see on the day-to-day basis.
I'm Roxy Gertis, and Wednesday, we wore red. It was BVMS Best Buddies Day. We meet with the best buddies, have our program about once. It's usually the second Wednesday in of the month. So we just do lots of different activities with, let's see, we've had Game Day, we've had Decorate Cookie Day, we've had scavenger hunts. We've just had lots of different activities that we do with the best buddies. So that was on Wednesday. And then we invited the rad group, and we invited all the kids that could come to come to our best buddies meeting. So we had lots of fun.
On Thursday, then, our student body had a chance to sign that banner, which was really fun. We had students at the table. And then during their lunch hours, the kids would go sign that banner. So that was a fun way to get everybody in the school involved. And then they also had pledge cards. I pledge to include. And so then they would write down how they're going to include others. And then we spelled out the word "respect" on one of our middle school walls.
So on Friday, to round out our week, I paired with Ambush Apparel to create these awesome shirts that we're wearing today, that's on the slide that you see us wearing, the Choose Kind shirts, which was the theme for the week that students and staff could buy and were encouraged to wear on Friday, as well as Link's, like Link's Wear attire. And then Friday morning, during homeroom, all of the students that were nominated for a Link's Leaders Card got called over the intercom, and we had an outstanding 95 students get a Link's Leader Card wrote for them. So an overwhelming amount of response for that first week, and they were 95 happy kids who got to eat first at lunch that week. So yeah, our Friday, this is kind of how we rounded it out, and we rounded it out with some good staff pictures of all of those who bought the awesome apparel.
Marcus is going to share a few words.
Hello, my name is Marcus Turner. I'm in 7th grade at BVMS. I really liked Inclusion Week because I liked to see all of the kids signing the banner. I also, I also enjoyed going to BVMS Buddies after school to play with my friends and do special activities together. Thank you for listening about Inclusion Week.
Thank you for that. Marcus, thank you. Excellent job. Thank you. And you can see the T-shirts. Turn around and show them the puzzle on the back. It says Advocate. So there you go. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. The next item we have is, and we do this every year, and I don't know if I've ever brought it in front of the board, but we take a group of students every year, 8th grade students, to the Women in Science Day in Sioux Falls. So one of our science teachers always brings a group each year. This year, Mrs. Ringling brought the group, and she has a few things to say.
Hi, I'm Amanda Ringling, and I teach 7th and 8th grade science at the middle school. On March 27th, we, or sorry, March 7th, 25 of our 8th grade ladies traveled to Southeast Technical College for the Women in Science event. The goal of the Women in Science event is to stimulate interest in science, technology, engineering, and math careers by connecting girls with local women that are already in these professions. So by providing these contexts, the event encourages young women to explore the possibilities available to them and continue taking the math and science classes that are necessary to prepare them for these, you know, really high-demand careers. We started our day with two young women in their last year of medical skill, or medical school. After discussing with our students the kind of specialties that doctors can pursue, they led them through a hands-on scenario of how to care for a hiker who had broken their leg out on a trail. Our ladies learned how to assess a wound, use an air cast, and even managed to strap in and carry one of our injured hikers on a stretcher, which was pretty fun to watch. The ladies loved it. Students were then given the opportunity to peruse different booths showcasing South Dakota universities, technical colleges, and professional organizations. Each booth provided students with different activities to try like a flight simulator. They were able to perform CPR and use life-saving devices on training dummies. They assembled skeletons. They won a plant for that, by the way, only ones. And they were extracting strawberry DNA, which is pretty cool. Our ladies liked this portion of the event best because they could gravitate towards booths that related to their interests and have great conversations with young professionals and college students who share those interests with them. The students also attended presentations on careers in graphic design, veterinary science, and with some physician scientists who were, they were able to perform a chemistry experiment that allowed them to discover the source of a fictitious food poisoning event in a school cafeteria, another fan favorite. Our STEM teachers and young ladies really appreciate the opportunity to be able to attend this positive and very engaging event every year. It's something that has brought on great conversations about future student ambitions, introduces them to the possibilities that are out there for them in South Dakota, and has provided them with some great memories. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your reports tonight. All right, next, we have superintendent's report. Superintendent Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few brief items to update you on here this, this evening. COVID-19 would remind the Board of Education that we will review and revise our Safe Return Plan at our May 23 Board of Education meeting. As described above, we will be ultimately looking to move those protocols and those processes back to very standardized, high-level items such as maintaining healthy hygiene, hand washing, those types of things, ultimately eliminating all of the close-contact requirements, et cetera. So it is a requirement from the feds in terms of our ESAR funds to have that Safe Return to Learn Plan, and it needs to be reviewed and revised every six months. So this will set us up for next fall. So that's coming at the May 23 Board of Education meeting. No changes will take effect until June 1st. Budget process, we are really nearing the, nearing the end of the input of information into the budget process. And now we're going to start to share what that budget is ultimately looking like. You'll get a preliminary budget presentation in the month of May, and then ultimately, we will hold our public budget hearing and have potential action on our, on our budget, our FY '23 budget in July at our annual meeting. Update, we continue to communicate the, the new information that we've found from USDA. Free breakfast and lunch will end as of June 30th. In addition to that, the Brandon Valley School District is no longer eligible for the summer feeding program. So once the school year is complete here in May, there will be no summer lunch program, and there will also be no free meals next fall, and we have begun to communicate that out to our parents in a variety of ways. Would just note that the ELL Summer School Program will be provided lunch as they're on-site during the summertime, but that lunch will be provided utilizing CNS Angel Funds. So continue to communicate that so that folks are aware of that, and they know that they need to fill out that free and reduced lunch application for next fall. It is our intent to continue to cover the cost associated with a reduced meal for those families that do qualify. So that remains intact for next school year, but it is certainly important to note that there will be no free meals next fall. High School Edition, the schedule, ultimately, no change to this as it has been communicated here over the course of the past few months. We will begin construction out in the parking lot here in the month of May. The parking lot is set to be completed by August 1st. So construction starts here in a few weeks and will be ongoing over the months of May, as well as the summer, with that parking lot being open and available for our use next fall. That's obviously to alleviate the pressure that we feel with the east side being under construction. I would note that the actual physical construction on the high school edition on the east side and northeast corner will not begin until June 1st, will be under construction ultimately the entire summer, entire school year of '22, '23, with substantial completion and final completion happening in the summer of '23, with us opening in the fall of '23. No change to our priorities of the high school edition, general classrooms, ground floor, special education services areas, science lab classrooms, all while we maximize land usage, upgrade our east facility face, and minimize our impact to parking. Accreditation, we will be having our desk audit next fall. That will occur on November 22nd. Professional awards would note that the Brandon Valley School District Employee Recognition Banquet will be held on Tuesday, May 3rd at 6:00 PM here in the Brandon Valley High School Commons. We celebrate our retirements, years of service awards, and the Brandon Valley School District Teacher of the Year. The last meeting in May, we will have our final good news report from respective buildings, and that will be the high school. Look forward to them sharing some, some updated information on career and technical education. Terms of this year's academic calendar, graduation will be held on May 15th. Our last day with students is May 25th. It is a two-hour early dismissal, and we have teacher workshop on May 26th. Looking forward to the next academic calendar, I would note that our start date, or our first day for kids, grades 1 through 12 is August 24th. That is a Wednesday. And then our first day for kindergarteners will be Friday on August 22nd, or 26th, I apologize. August 26th is our first day for kindergarten families, and you can remember that allows them to have that one-on-one visit on Wednesday and Thursday, and then ultimately start school on Friday. And then our first day of early childhood will be on Monday, August 29th. With that, I would like to give Mr. Skipstead an opportunity. I know that we don't have our respective buildings on the Board of Education agenda for tonight, but we had a staff member receive a pretty prestigious award out of Brandon Valley Intermediate School. Wanted to provide him an opportunity to honor that individual here this evening.
Yeah, we have Becky Van Rukel, 6th grade math teacher, is one of the finalists for the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science. I know, I think Mr. Hoagie has been a recipient of that. So she has been put in the finalist of that to see the ultimate winner. I think they don't find out here for a little bit, but we'll be giving her a plaque and things like that. But she's gone through an extensive process to even put herself up for that award, and a lot of things that she has to do on her end. So excited for her and congratulating her, and she's very humble and doesn't want any recognition, but tough. So anyway, she's, she's a fabulous math teacher, and we'll look forward to what happens.
Thank you for sharing. I would also note there's a wide variety of days and weeks coming up here in the next little bit to honor, honor school staff. Specifically, I would note that Administrative Professionals Day is on Wednesday. So our secretarial staff will be showered with gifts and appreciation here this Wednesday. And then next week is ultimately Teacher Appreciation Week. Principal Appreciation Day is in there somewhere. And just a lot of opportunities here in the coming weeks to honor our respective staff members. So I look forward to, I look forward to that opportunity. Would certainly field any questions that you may have.
Can you just give maybe the 20,000-foot view of what is, what it means when it says accreditation? I think sometimes people might think, you know, does that mean we're in trouble? Does that mean whatever? And I know it does not, but it might be just a 20, you know, and like who's in charge of that or what that really looks like. I know it's not.
So accreditation occurs approximately every five years. There was a little bit of a delay in a few accreditations because of COVID. They put that off for some folks. But ultimately, it is us providing a tremendous amount of information and documentation to the Department of Ed through the submission of our documents regarding curriculum, instruction, as well as all the respective statutes associated with the health and safety of students. The one bullet point I have obviously does not do it justice for the tremendous hour, number of hours of work that go into the accreditation process. I would tell you that in addition to myself and Jennifer Swenson, our Director of Instruction plays a critical role in that when we talk about teaching to the standards, the depth of learning necessary that we're required to document. And then in addition to that, our, our respective building principals supplying all of the documentation associated with safety drills, all of those respective items. You're required to have a background check for every staff member on file. So they'll pull a chunk of those and say, prove that you have these. You have to have birth certificates for every kindergarten child, immunization records. You just have to prove that you've either had them or there's a waiver on file from the family. It is an extensive process, and it is what we will be doing this summer. So that will be, that will be a major task that we have this summer. But the, the, the motto that we're required to display in our respective commons areas that's in state law to go, you take pictures of that, provide documentation that you've met those statutes. It's, I do not want to use the word cumbersome, but it is an extensive amount of work and documentation that we are required to submit to the Department of Ed that shows that we are in, in alignment to all of the requirements that they have outlined for us in statute and administrative rule. Every five years. I don't know if that was 20,000, 5,000, or 40,000, but that would be my quick summary.
Any other questions for Superintendent Larson tonight? All right. Thank you very much, Superintendent. Board policy, there is none for us to review tonight. That takes us to our general business item. Item number one, to approve the purchase and eight-year adoption of the junior K to 12 mathematics curriculum delivery model at a one-time cost of $1,147, 47, 58, $47,058.81 effective the 2022-2023 school year as presented.
Thank you. The purpose again is to adopt the mathematics curriculum. The committee work started in September of 2021. We formed a committee representing all buildings and all grade levels, and we also included people from special services, English learners, and technology. In October of 2021, the vendors presented to the committee. In March, the parent committee reviewed the proposed materials. In April, right now, we're presenting to the school board the proposal. And if approved, in May, professional development will start. July, the curriculum materials will be purchased. September 2022, work sessions begin on developing curriculum, and fall 2022, the implementation would begin. As far as what people selected on the committee, two words that stand out are consistency and continuity. All of the products from kindergarten, from junior kindergarten through Algebra II are from McGraw-Hill. And all the products are either products we currently use or the newer version of them. So at junior kindergarten, they're not requesting any new curriculum because last year they purchased an ELA curriculum that also included math, social studies, and science. They are, however, requesting some math manipulatives so that every child has the same access to the materials across the district. At the elementary, they are going with MyMath. MyMath is the program that we're currently using right now, and they will have print and digital. As far as supplemental math, they're going with iXL. It's a program that we've used before and we're returning back to. The teachers like it because it's aligned to the South Dakota standards, but also to both their math and their reading textbook. The intermediate school, 5th grade is considered elementary, so they're part of the MyMath adoption. They will get print and digital. And 6th grade is selecting Reveal Math. That is the newer version of the program that they're currently using. Both the 5th grade and the 6th grade would like to continue using Alex, which is their supplemental online curriculum. At the middle school, they selected Reveal Math, which is the newer version of the curriculum that they're currently using. And they also would like to continue with Alex. When you get to the high school, the algebra, geometry, and Algebra II are going with Glencoe Math. They were using Glencoe Math before for Algebra I, and now this would extend through Algebra II and geometry. That also means that the 8th grade algebra students would be using the same curriculum. And also, they're big fans of Alex, and they would like to continue that up through Algebra II. The only change that we have in the companies that we are going with is at the upper math courses, where they're going with Cengage. They will receive digital with classroom sets. This is for our college algebra, pre-calc and calc. It's the same textbook that is used and approved by Northern, so that's important for us. The high school is also requesting iPads and pencils for the math teachers so that they can move about the classroom, working with students and displaying the math problems as they work so they're not tethered to their desktops. This is only for the teachers. We're not talking iPads for students, just nine iPads for the teachers so they can walk around the room as they're working math problems. And then finally, professional development is with any curriculum adoption. And so we've included ours for the committee and the 5 through 12 math teachers to work on developing curriculum documents for the district. And we're also going to have the elementary committee members attend a Fact Fluency PD. They always talk about the fact that our students can continue to practice their math facts, and so we'll be talking about strategies for helping students learn those. So this is an eight-year, one-time purchase for $1,147, 58.81.
Can you? Go ahead.
Go for it.
Will you explain why it's an eight-year and not a seven-year?
Yes, I will. Normally, we do seven-year adoptions, but our elementary teachers have a heavy lift between each adoption because they teach more than one subject. By going to eight years, we create a one-year buffer between the ELA adoption and the math adoption next time. So it gives the elementary teachers more time to work with the curriculum before they have to take another new curriculum on. And MyMath, the one that they're currently using, will be discontinued after this 2030 proposal would be done.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No. Madam Chair, I just would like to thank Director Nelson for her work on the curriculum adoption process. It is extensive. It is thorough. She utilizes voices from, like she referenced, all buildings, all various divisions and levels, and consistent corresponding. And again, just really appreciate all the time and effort that they've put into it, as well as our parent volunteers that have taken the time to review those, those requested curriculum items from our, from our respective staff. So thank you, Director Nelson.
Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the purchase and eight-year adoption of the junior K to 12 mathematics curriculum as presented, please.
So moved. Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Under consent approval, I would entertain a motion to approve items 2 and 3.
So moved. Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Personnel, I would entertain a motion to approve items 1 through 13.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Items 14 through 18 are for information only. Under communication to the Board of Education, there is a thank you note for you to review if you choose. Board reports, does anyone have a formal board report that they would like to share tonight?
We had our ASBSD Spring Retreat. They actually came this side of the river, and we also did it in Sioux Falls. What I can say is they very much enjoyed being here where things are available and happening. So that may happen again, which would be great rather than going to peer. A couple of highlights. We went around and gave good news, as we always do. They were very interested to talk about negotiations. Some are still going through that exercise. There were two districts that stood out kind of above the others. Us and I will say Huron were the two that stood out above in terms of the packages and the raises, and as well as how well things went. After we kind of talked about it, many of the other districts, and this was quote, "You guys are killing us." It's causing it to be difficult for them to go through negotiations, as well as for, they all want to come our way, which is fine. Legislation overview, we did talk about, there wasn't a whole lot that went on legislatively other than really the budget outcome. We'll be keeping our eyes on homeschool and private funding. A lot of times, those are the buzzwords, and that might be what's coming, as well as the cannabis taxation and other things coming up this next year. The biggest thing that we were just asked, there'll be some legislative seats that change our neck of the woods. The biggest thing is if you know who they are or as you vote, I really just want to think about how they support education. That'll be our biggest thing. That hasn't always been something that's been favorable here for us, and you can see that as they vote consistently over the last several years. The biggest buzzword for Brandon Valley, and as they were rooting across the state and had so many questions, was our indoor banned at Worlds, and they were thrilled, and they wanted to find out more. They wanted to hear about what is indoor banned, and where do you guys do that? Indoors. So they wanted to know more, and they had so many questions about where to see it and watch it and to come our way, as well as everyone had heard about Mary Poppins, and they wanted to find out more about that. And so again, the quote was, "What does Brandon Valley not have? Academics and the sports and the arts." And so it was just great to hear all that back. The other thing I would just throw out there is the ASBSD website has now listed their 2022 award nominations. So if you do have a couple of minutes, it doesn't take much to go on there. You can nominate Outstanding Education Community Service Awards, and that's, could be an organization. It could be an individual. It doesn't have to be someone that is just licensed in education, but someone that really serves K through 12 education. It could be an It could be an outstanding board member. That's another award. There's also an award for an outstanding school board as a group, as well as a longevity individual. I don't think we have anybody that has served enough years yet, but that's something to keep an eye out for, as well as a school bell award. And there's a lot of information there. So again, the ASBSD website and you can see a link for those awards. Any questions that I can answer for anybody? We had a crafting team builder. You don't want to see a picture of mine.
Piggybacking on the BVI, as they are called, it's kind of cool. They just got back from what's called Worlds. And they were not really supposed to hit the semifinals or hit the finals. I will happily tell you that our Scholastic Open BVI placed eighth out of 37 bands in the finals. South Dakota is being talked about. On another note, I want you to know that your students use the Link's Way so much, in fact, that they've been invited back to the same hotel, the hotel who was so appreciative of how they treated their staff that they went out and bought them cake and balloons to congratulate them, followed them around and found them practice spots at the local fire station, whose chief came from another city or another, you know, area to actually come hear them listen. And they said, when you come back to Blue Ash, you're invited. So be proud of the character initiatives we have. Be proud of who we are and who we are as educators and the kids because the kids and parents had a once-in-a-lifetime experience. And it's impressive. So thank you for all the support that you give our kids in everything they do, whatever activity they choose to do. It's, we are very blessed. We'll put it that way and leave it there. Any other formal board reports tonight? All right, there's one travel report for your review there. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for South Dakota Codeified Law 1-25-2.3 to review communications from legal counsel.
So moved.
Second. There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, it is 7:02 and we will dismiss everyone else. Thank you. Okay, it is 7:10. We will come out of executive session. There is no action to be taken. That takes us to the end of our scheduled meeting. I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.